Thank you, Carol.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the March 20th, 2014 Town and Public Planning Board Meeting. Please join me in the salute to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We've got a pretty long agenda this evening. I'm going to make a couple of changes in the order due to circumstances. So, when we get to the plan reviews, we're going to McDonald's. Main Street will be number one. McKee Construction Architectural Review will be number two. And then Bassett College on down will be three, four, five, and six. Okay? So, that's how we're going to do that. So, this evening, first on the agenda, Springside Neighborhood Development Site Plan Hearing, Lot Line Revision Review for Proposed Mixed-Use Development, 45, 48, 52, and 54. Springside Avenue and 25 Van Wagner Road. Zone ATC Arlington Town Center. 4.77 acres. Negative Declaration on File built parcel four LLC and built parcel three LLC owners to be adjourned. I move that we adjourn the public hearing forward to May 15th, 2014.
Second.
We moved in second that we adjourn the public hearing until May 15th, 2014. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Application number two, Riverpoint Residential and West Park Professional Buildings. amended Seeker review. Recommendation to Town Board for SHOD designation. Site plan and aquatic resource permit, public hearing and lot line revision review regarding a proposed development plan amendment to include a single seven-story building containing 85 eight restricted dwelling units, 31,534 square feet medical office, and 13,976 square feet retail pharmacy or medical services uses. 2055 South Road and 83 Old Post Road zoned are office research with a senior housing overlay district commonly called a SHOD. Designation 7.14 acres. Negative declaration for an unlisted action on file WA9 LLC owners.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Christopher Lapina with the Chazin Companies.
Alan Daniels, applicant. Who did you say the owners were?
No, I said the owners were WA Route 9 LLC.
Okay.
WA?
That's right.
What's WA?
I thought you said LRC.
No. No, LRC is a whole different company.
It was quick. Yeah, it was unbelievable.
We'll entertain a name change if you'd like. I mean, no problem. Anyway, go ahead, Chris.
We were before the planning board in January, at which time you asked us to provide additional information regarding our proposed parking availability onsite, interior amenities associated with the development, also layout of our off-site sanitary sewer alignment, and a visual elevation looking from the intersection of Route 9 and Old Post Road. We've provided that information to the town in support of a NEG deck and referral to the Town Board for a SHOD overlay, and we are looking to field any questions that the board members may have on our application.
Okay. Thank you. Eric?
This is yours?
Yeah. Actually, on...
Yeah, Riverpoint.
Yeah, I'll just note that if the planning... Liz Axelson of Mars Associates did the planning review on this. She's recommending, well, if you're inclined to go the Seeker negative declaration tonight and a referral to the Town Board, it would obviously go to the Plan Board, to the Town Board, rather than be coming back to you for site plan approval in the future. I'll leave it to Liz.
Okay. So, just, I'll do a quick run-through because I see you have a long agenda. So, I took my previous review letter, and I went through the materials submitted for Seeker, and generally, they look pretty satisfactory. And so, if you're going through my memorandum quickly, the only comments really that changed are the ones that were bold and italicized. So, for example, if you skip to page three, there's a comment, number six, about parking. And I did review the submitted parking information and checked some of the sources and some of the calculations, and felt that for the purposes of Seeker and addressing a rationale for the proposed parking and the concerns the board has expressed, that we're in good shape, of course, depending on the board's feelings and discussion. And then skipping to page four, I made a brief remark about snow storage area that was taking up parking, which I think should be moved. And then also, a cross-section of the site was provided as requested so that we could get an idea of the look from Route 9. And I checked it against the plans, and I thought it looked acceptable for the purposes of Seeker. And so, most of the other comments remain the same. So, there are a number of plan revisions after Seeker if the board is so inclined. So, my recommendation for action is provided on, beginning at the bottom of page two, which basically suggests that the planning board direct the applicant to address the remainder of the plan comments. The planning board is satisfied with amended application, could conclude Seeker review. A draft negative declaration has been provided and reviewed with Eric. And then also, if the planning board is satisfied with the current submittals, adopt a resolution recommending the Town Board adopt the amended SHOD designation, including any additional recommendations, such as the covenant described in my comment 10. And then defer action on the site plan, aquatic resource permit, and lot line revision. And just briefly, comment 10 was a recommendation in previous comments that a draft covenant be submitted about the increase in residential density per zoning section. That's not the right one, is it? Yes, that's it.
No, that's correct.
That's right. About the increase in residential density as per the zoning section referenced, which would be needed for Town Board consideration of the amended SHOD designation.
Thank you, Liz. Joe? Anything?
Um...
Oh, I'm sorry. He's absolutely right. I've been waiting too long. We're going to open the public hearing.
I move that we open the public hearing.
Second.
We moved in second that we open the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Anyone in the audience wish to comment on this application? No one has signed up to speak, but I'm just checking in case there's someone snuck in. Seeing no one, I...
Move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded that we close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. I've got to head of myself. Joe, any comments?
Thank you. Basically, there's nothing else you can do with this project. You did a great job. You know, parking might be an issue, but overall, I think it's a good project, so.
Thank you. Carl?
Also, thank you. You know, it was great to see the shared parking analysis. That eases our concerns about that a bit more. The graph especially showed how it doesn't overlap that much. And the amenities list, you know, why it'd be nice to have a nice rooftop garden or something or park, but if the, you have lots of other amenities, the pool, and the gym, and stores and such. And you do have the, we talked about a walking path around the pond, but with the topography, you have sidewalk, at least, you got a partial...
We did provide the internal connection for the sidewalk, along with a number of dedicated outdoor exterior workout stations.
Okay, sounds good. Additional amenities. So, whatever you could fit in here, looks like you fit in. You know, since, I don't know if you had a question, since, you know, the parking has been spread out versus under the building, now do you have it planned for valet parking, potentially, if somebody comes back, they're pretty far away? I mean, if the parking gets used up midday by pharmacy people or something, and somebody has to park further, is there a valet option?
There is that option that was listed within the amenities for the residents of the apartment complex.
Sounds good. I would suggest an electric vehicle charging station as an amenity as well. I've seen them on a post.
It's gone here.
There's just two on there. Okay, great. And with the building this high, you might want to see if there's anything you prep ahead of time for a cell antenna co-location because they'll probably be after you with it.
For what?
A cell antenna, cell tower antenna. Co-location, since it's going to be one of the highest points in the area.
So, you want us to install a cell?
Didn't say go install it. I said if there's any prep.
No, just be prepared in case you are approached.
You may be approached.
If you want, maybe you want to be proactive and approach them, just to see what...
That's another idea.
Could source the revenue, as you know, I'm sure.
You could apply it toward the green roof.
I'm sorry.
You could apply the revenue towards the green roof.
There you go.
Buy a lot of green paint. Big green antenna.
I figured you'd say that.
And I guess that's it.
Carl.
Rich? I know, I think you've, you addressed the comments, the things we wanted on parking. I think you did a good job there.
Thank you.
I guess Chris is the... And so, I think as far as Seeker and so forth, and the recommendations, I think we're in pretty good shape, so.
Excellent. Peter?
Just a couple of quick items. In the previous submissions, it seems to me that washers and dryers were not included in the units, and in this recent submission, they are included. And I'm wondering if our engineers take into consideration the calculation of the wastewater.
Yes, we...
Yeah, it has been, yes.
Okay. Also, with regard to the parking, I think you did the best that you could do under the circumstances. I don't think any of the examples you gave really fit this model because they, like the Urban Land Institute, everything they do is pretty much urban-related. Although, this is a mixed-use building. It doesn't have transportation, and the, I think that the 55 and older demographic is very misunderstood. But I think we've satisfied what's required under the ordinance, so we're just going to have to take a chance.
We, what we attempted to do for each of the particular uses was determine their peak usage during a portion of the day and kind of...
Following is, this is called an a priori conclusion. In other words, we're using the best information that you have to come to a conclusion. Unfortunately, I just don't think, and I'm not arguing the point, I'm just saying, I don't think because this is new, it's never been done here before, it's very difficult to get a real good feeling for what's going to happen, so we're just going to have to take a chance. Other than that, that's it.
There's a little bit of risk involved, but sometimes you've got to take a risk to get good... Hopefully, it will work out.
Rich?
We did. I always think, I forgot we closed.
Yeah, we did.
I move that the planning board adopt a Seeker negative declaration indicating that a... Okay. Okay, I move that the planning board, as lead agency for the coordinated review of an unlisted action, determine that the Riverpoint Residential...
And West Park Professional Building.
Professional Building not have a significant adverse effect on the environment, and that no environmental impact statement will be required for the reasons set forth in the attached negative declaration dated March 20th, 2013...
14.
14, as prepared by the planning department.
Second.
Yes, we moved and seconded what Rick said, what he read into the record. The planning board is lead agency for the coordinated review and unlisted action, determine that the Riverpoint Residential and West Park Professional Building would not have a significant adverse effect on the environment, no environmental impact statement will be required for the reasons set forth in the attached negative declaration dated March 20th, 2014. It's, I'm sorry, I've got to amend that, and aquatic resource permit and lot line revision is all part of the motion. As, and the negative decade dated today, as by the planning department. I know it's kind of whatever, you got that down, right? Okay. And I think that covers all the points. Okay, call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. You've got the aquatic resource, lot line revision, and this unlisted secret. Okay. Thank you, Eric.
Do we have...
I think we're done, aren't we?
I don't know.
The SHOD referral.
Ah, the SHOD. Have you got a recommendation for the SHOD?
Do we have any? Well, we just got the covenant. Really, is that the only thing we really have?
I used to say the motion is that the Town Board adopt the, we recommend that the Town Board adopt the amended SHOD designation. Does that sound reasonable, Eric?
Including the covenant described in comment 10 below.
Yes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we recommend the Town Board adopt the amended SHOD designation, including any additional recommendations, such as the covenant described in comment 10 below in the document.
Done.
Yes, sir.
Done. Possible to include in that recommendation request that the legal department to come up with a determination with regard to qualifying people. This is the SHOD, we're giving a density bonus based on people's age, 55 and older. Can we include in our recommendation that the legal department look into some kind of procedure to determine that the people who are renting these apartments are qualified?
Yeah, it's actually already in the statute that there is, you know, there's a mechanism for basically a census, if you will. It's already actually written in the, in the SHOD and a covenant that they would have to provide the town. But you could certainly include that in the recommendation if you wish.
Yeah, I'd like to include it, just to be on the safe side.
Okay, I'll amend the motion to include that if it's okay with my second.
All right, I'll second the...
But just a question, who's going to be the one watching if there, you know, do we have, is the building department is going to look over the...
Honestly, it's no different than any other site plan approved by the planning board. We have, you know, ongoing enforcement requirements and responsibilities.
Okay, thank you. Question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
You're good to go to Town Board and see if we can get that overlay.
Wait, I think there's something else, too.
We did, you know, lot line revision, aquatic resource, SHOD. Oh, defer site plan?
Right, right. I move that we defer action on review of the site plan, aquatic resource permit, and lot line revision, as specified, for the reasons specified in the notes attached.
We defer to, we should probably have a date defer to...
Well, we can't do it until...
Well, it's got to come back to you.
May...
I would suggest you put it at least to the May 15th.
Yeah, May 15th?
Yeah.
Defer to May 15th. Okay, it's been moved that we defer action on site plan based on the verbiage, the document to May 15th, 2014.
Second.
We have to prove the SHOD.
Right, exactly. So, it depends how long the Town Board takes to do that piece of the business. Call the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Okay.
I think that's it.
That is it. Well, between the two of us, we got it.
Yeah.
Okay. Number three, all space self-storage, amended site plan hearing regarding four additional storage unit buildings proposed to expand the current storage facility of 11 buildings. 100 through 120 Salt Point Turnpike zoned, light industry IL 7.07 acres, all space storage LLC owner.
Good evening. Kelly Leibl with Page Park Associates. We were before you, I think, several months ago, at which time I think we addressed most of the outstanding comments, primarily related to some of the floodplain issues. We provided you with a subsequent submission. I think at this point, all of the items have been addressed, and so, I think we're here tonight to, here if there's any public comment, address those, and hopefully seek site plan approval.
Thank you. Okay, this is a, let me hear from Eric first. How's that?
Staff is recommending, previously, there was some questions regarding the floodplain and the stormwater. Those appear to have been resolved. I think the engineer will have a comment on part of that. The floodplain administrator of the building department has indicated that has a permit application in hand. We have a couple of notes in here, and they'll have to get that permit before, during a building permit. With that, satisfied, staff is comfortable recommending that the board proceed with a NEG deck and a conditional approval. Probably the only site plan issues which are incorporated in our conditions is we continue, as we did last time, we continue to recommend some landscaping and buffering, particularly along the boundary with the adjacent multifamily residential district, because when that gets developed at some point in the future, that was the purpose of that guideline for the industrial district. And the proposed site plan will not meet the discretionary setbacks for improvements on the site, so staff felt that the, some landscape buffering is, would be a reasonable mitigation in lieu of those setbacks.
Done. Anything further?
Just as a point of clarification, I mentioned in the pre-meeting that the minimal amount of flooding in the, I called it the parking lot, but I clarified that in that is, there is drainage in between all of the buildings, and all the buildings may see up to six inches if the analysis is as, you know, if it's carried out as well in the field as the analysis was on paper, only during a hundred-year flood. So, if you can get through the hundred-year flood on the road, then you're going to be inside the storage area with six inches of water, but it will not reach the building floor.
So, basically, we're require, or we're designing it better than DOT?
Yep.
It's also designed to, at that six inches, go into the swell, so it wouldn't, it'd be prevented from coming up any higher. It would go off into the swell on the surface. So, the pounding would reach a height to go over the edge of the parking lot into the swell.
Okay. I was going to say something smart, but I'm not going to. Okay, thank you.
I move that we open the public hearing.
Second.
We moved in second, we opened a public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Anyone in the audience wish to comment on the all-space application? Here, seeing no one, I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved in second, call a question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Let's go around the board. Carl? Ah, sorry, you want to start with Carol?
No, I just, I just have a question. Subsequent to my last review, I copy of the D E C letter regarding land disposal, and the disturbance activities requiring a temporary restricted barrier monitor. I'm just wondering what direction you're going in.
What we'd like to do is try to put up the temporary cell fence that they call for in the disturbance activities before April 14th, so at least that's established. Have you inspect it, and then at least that temporary barrier will be up, so that once we start construction, we can do it within that April, is it April, October timeframe? If that's okay with the town. No, sorry, if that's okay with the town.
Is it okay with him? It's okay with me. Works for us.
Good.
Okay, thank you. Carl?
The only thing I had was, was what the department had mentioned, landscape, original landscaping sheet plan or anything, but it's a residential multifamily zoning behind that unit, if maybe some trees as a screening or something.
Yeah, I think we talked about evergreen, right? Is that what's on the, do evergreen trees?
Okay.
Four evergreens.
Well, that's good.
I have nothing to add.
Peter?
As long as the engineering department is satisfied that it's going to drain properly, it's fine with me.
Joe?
No comments.
Well, since it's being better, built better than DOT specs, it must be okay.
But does that...
Who's to say? That's where I wasn't going to go.
Okay, I move that the planning board is lead agency for the coordinated view of an unlisted action, determine that the all-space self-storage site plan would not have a significant adverse effect on the environment, and that no environmental impact statement will be required for the reasons set forth in the attached negative declaration dated March 20th, 2014, as prepared in the draft form and to be finalized by the planning department.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the planning board has the lead agency for the coordinated review of nonlisted action, determine that the all-space self-storage plan, site plan would not have a significant adverse effect on the environment, and no environmental impact statement will be required for the reasons set forth in the attached negative declaration dated March 20th, 2014, as prepared in draft form and to be finalized by the planning department. Call the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
I move that the planning board grant conditional site plan approval for the all-space self-storage site plan, subject to the following. Do we really need all those?
Uh, probably.
Okay.
One through 13. We moved in seconded that the, we planning board grant conditional site plan approval for the all-space self-storage site plan, subject to the following, one through 13. You know, the comment was made about the trees, and I think it was...
That was part of the planning comments.
Got it. Call the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Okay. Six inches of water, that's good. Okay, now, now we're going to go, we're going to juggle the calendar.
We have to suspend the rules.
Okay, I ask for a motion to suspend the rules to allow comments on any other agenda items on tonight's program.
We're moved.
Call the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Anyone in the audience wish to comment on any other tonight's agenda items?
I move that we resume the rules.
Second.
Okay, so we moved in second that we resume the rules. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Okay. Plan review, number one this evening is going to be McDonald's. McDonald's here. They are.
I'm making me shift my paper, huh?
Yeah. And the reason we're moving the agenda around is that we have two attorneys here, and so we're trying to group together the applications by which attorney is going to represent the board for the, for those. So, Janice, you're up first, right? Hi.
Hi, Brad Bowler from Bowler Engineering. I'm the applicant representative tonight. I'm here to present the changes that we made to the plan since the last time we spoke a couple of weeks ago, and ask that we be scheduled for, I guess, the final hearing on April 17th as well.
Well, we'll have to see how it goes. How's that?
So, there were a number of comments that both the city and the town had, had made through the board hearings, as well as engineering departments, DPW, et cetera, and I'll go through the big-picture items that we addressed as part of those changes on the current plans that are in the, in the town right now. The biggest, I guess, comment that we had regarding the ADA spaces is that they were a little bit too close to the right-of-way, so what we did was we actually moved those ADA spaces closer to the building and in further into the site, so that it would allow for a full car to back up out of those ADA spaces without entering into the right-of-way or along those sidewalk areas. And that's been shown on the, on the current plan. We've removed two McDonald's signs on the building, noting that those are both in the city, but we wanted to make sure the town knew that as well. We actually reduced the existing, the proposed freestanding sign to a monument sign from a pylon sign, so that's been reduced and then landscaped appropriately. We reduced the lighting levels on both the city and the town along the property boundaries, on the outside of those property boundaries, to appropriate levels to meet the requirements. The only areas we don't have compliance is where the city and the town boundaries are shared, where it accesses one lot, but it's an overlap because of, of that shared boundary. And at the entrance and exit points for the driveways, where we'd want to enhance some safety for pedestrian crossings, as well as having cars enter the site at that location. We reduced the light poles to 20 feet high to meet the ordinance criteria for the, for the town, and kept that across the site, so that it's compliant throughout. We added additional landscaping at the town's request in the rear of the property, back by the parking spaces, as well as enhancing some of the landscaping near the trash enclosure, and also along the main street as well. And then we added a bike rack at the request of the town, right off the sidewalk entrance towards the entrance to the property, to allow for bikes in those areas. entrance, towards the entrance to the property, to allow for bikes in those areas. And that's the, the majority of the changes that we've made to the site plans.
Okay, thank you. I wonder where that bike rack is.
Let's see, this, I'm pleased to hear a lot of, a lot of those changes. Apparently, we, the map plans that we received for review predated these. I did get a call yesterday that these plans were reviewed in the city, and that the city had deferred action on the plan. As you recall, the planning board consented to the city as lead agency, therefore, tonight the planning board can take no action on the application, but it is free to, to make comments to the applicant for the next time. Staff has prepared a number of the comments, it sounds like some of them have been dealt with, but we haven't yet reviewed that, seen that plan and reviewed it. So I think staff would, would stand by the recommendation that you have to defer the application with the comments.
Since we got to wait on the city and their lead agency.
Correct.
So I can't guarantee the April day, you got to get through the city finalizing.
Understood. At our hearing with the city, there was no further comments, and they just weren't in a position to close SECR and take action, so they expect to do that next hearing.
Okay, so as soon as they do that, let us know, and we'll try and get you in on the agenda as soon as possible.
Okay.
Fair enough? Okay. Um, let's see. Don, anything?
Just wanted to point out that there will be some demolition of the sidewalk. We, we just asked for notes to make sure that that got put back in proper shape.
I did reach out to the highway superintendent, because I think that sidewalks or in that area are jurisdiction of the town highway department, is that correct? Do you know if they'll need a permit for that?
It's a county road, so I'm not sure.
Because I know elsewhere on Main Street, the town's been involved in sidewalk and streetscape improvements, so I have that, I haven't yet gotten a clear answer, but I, that's part of our conditions, is to look into that. So we'll have that figured out by next time.
Okay. Carol, anything? No? It is McDonald's after all, come on.
What's that?
It is McDonald's. Richard?
Uh, I mean, I think that the planning department's comments have included anything that I think we could have any impact on.
Okay. Peter?
You mentioned that you reduce the light level. Can you tell me what you reduced it to?
So, in the, on the town side.
Just on the.
On the town side, along the property to the east and north, they're at the .2-foot handles, along the property line in the south, and the shared property. The shared property, which is basically in the middle of our site, it's around, you know, two to five, depending on where you have the light.
So it's .2?
Yes.
That should be fairly innocuous for the neighborhood. Okay, thank you, Peter. Joe?
Yeah, just a question, are you going to shut down the business with the construction, or are you going to do in phases?
Well, yeah, we have to shut down the business, it's a small site, so, they'll be closed for three months to four months.
Okay, tear it down. Right?
Yes.
I think you put up a tent.
That'll be tough, grease trap and all.
Yeah, good. Okay, that's an old building. Carl?
I think you, the new plans that you just discussed, all those options, addressed a lot of my concerns, landscaping, the monument sign, I think that's more appropriate for a land, for a Main Street versus a highway kind of thing. And the human scale lighting, a little less glare. And the bike rack, because there was one there before at some time, and it's good to have that in that area. I just had a question, is, with this new design, is the HVAC screened? We didn't get to architecture yet.
Yes, that's, it's screened, there's a parapet that's contained within the outside of the building, it screens all the HVAC stuff.
Okay. That's all I have then, thanks.
I move that the planning board determine that the application is incomplete pending completion of secret review by the city planning board as lead agency, and direct the applicant to respond to comments of the town departments and agencies, including but not limited to the following, one through six, plus the comments from the board tonight during the session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We moved in second that the planning board determine that the application is incomplete pending completion of a secret review by the city Poughkeepsie Planning Board as lead agency, and direct the applicant to respond to comments of town departments and agencies, including but not limited to the following, one through six, any comments that were made that were relevant this evening. Call a question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carries five to zero.
I move that the planning board direct staff to circulate said comments to the city planning board.
Second.
It's moved in second that the planning board direct staff to circulate said comments to the city of Poughkeepsie Planning Board. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's make it happen. Okay, application, number three. McDonald's. Six, which is now number two of McKee Construction Building Architecture Review. Number six in the program, which is now virtually number two. Architecture review for modifications to the smaller northern one of two existing buildings for a construction business consisting of two, I'm sorry, office space, sales and storage, 2264 to 2270 South Road, zoned BH Highway Business, 3.36 acres, type-two action, Town Center, Poughkeepsie LLC owner. Hi.
Hi, I'm John McKee. I'm the owner of McKee Construction. I'm looking at putting my business in this building, doing some architectural changes on the building. Keeping it pretty much basically this way it is, just putting a gable on the front for a sign, some columns, some landscaping in the front, stone walls and a monument sign, and looking for approvals for that.
Where do you, where do you currently operate out of your house?
Uh, no, I have the building next door, where Davis Furniture is. I have a, just an area in that.
Oh, okay. Well, it's good to see you need more space.
I'm not saying anything addresses that.
Yeah.
Especially the roof.
Certainly better than it.
The holes in the roof and all.
Okay.
So it's.
Um, do you have any, any material lists or samples of the materials?
Uh, right here.
Yeah.
Okay, here they come. What's all that white stuff on the ground in this picture? Is that snow?
Hey, that's a same shingle on my house, just like the halo up there.
I see, alright, I thought there was a storm coming in. Good, good choice. Comments, questions, anybody have any objections?
Yeah, I just can't read it.
Okay, I think it's good.
I move that we accept architectural review as presented with the materials and the trail on the board, and so on and so forth.
Good one. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's moved in second that we accept the architecture as presented and the materials on the board, and, and so on and so forth. So, call a question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carries five to zero. You're done.
Thank you very much.
You have in mind to do the construction.
I'm sorry? Oh, I'm going to look, bit it out, probably.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I'll bet China who the little bitters gonna be.
Think?
Who's the little bid?
This way, right? Simple.
I thought it was now. I think you should have taken it down.
Okay, guess you're done, Janice.
Good night, everyone.
Good night. Okay, number three, now, the new attorney, Joshua Mackey, who brought a big satchel full of papers. Vassar College Science Building Amendment, amended SECR site plan and aquatic resource permit review for a project portion behind Sanders Classroom and Sanders Physics Building to modify truck turnaround area and add outdoor amenities and stormwater treatment in an expanded project area. 124 Raymond Avenue is owned, I N Institutional, 255.89 acres, secret negative declaration, type-one action on file, Vassar College owner.
Good evening, Ken Casmento from LRC. What we've done is the area behind Sanders Classroom and Sanders Physics, this firetruck turnaround, Vassar has always wanted to turn this into more of an outdoor classroom space and kind of modify that there, but at the time, there was no project funding for that. At this time, basically, that's the only area that's been modified, which is in, is in here, shown as an overall, and here's a blow-up of it. And basically, what it's going to have is a paved section with some inlaid stone around the outside. All of the pavement is drivable, even though it doesn't look as if it's drivable, the intent is to have more of a feel of pedestrian use and not a big open sea of pavement, because it's going to be turned into more of an outdoor classroom space. So, it'll still have the same pedestrian connections that it did before, have the same ability with the firetruck. We've met with Mr. Steenberg and worked through some details to make sure he's happy with the truck turn movements, and we've accommodated all of that, and we've created a little seat walls here with some outdoor classroom space. That's basically the nature of it and all.
That's it?
That's it.
Wow. It's come a long way since the first days we talked about, you know, and everybody was fighting about the trucks where the, you know.
Yes.
And I think it's much improved, you know, much improved since it's evolved nicely. At any rate, Don, anything?
We're anticipating a revised SWIP at some point, but other than that, that's, everything else is minimal.
Carol, anything?
No comment.
Okay.
Peter?
We satisfied the question about the underground gas line for the fire department, so, sure, it's fine.
Good. Joe?
No, I'm good too, I'm glad that we found a way for the fire department to find, hopefully won't, but.
Yes. Carol?
Guess the only question I had was that, that tree you're taking down and within that protected wall or something, I thought we fought to keep that earlier in the previous designers. It didn't seem like it was on top of the platform, so.
It, it was, you know, a tree that's been around for a long time, but the health of the tree Vassar's had, and I can give this as part of the conditions of approval, we can submit that as part of that to just document, you know, Vassar went out and had the tree analyzed and looked at and checked, and it's basically in poor health, so.
Figure it was something like that.
To, to change everything to fit around the tree that's probably going to fail in the next few years didn't make sense. So they're trying to accommodate moving forward with it, so that's why the tree's coming down now.
All right.
I'm good.
I move that the planning board waive site plan and aquatic resource permit public hearing for the amended project.
Second.
It's moved in second that the planning board waive the site plan and aquatic resource permit public hearing for the amended project. Call a question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carries five to zero.
I move that the planning board as lead agency hereby determines that the approval of the Vassar College Science Building amended site plan and aquatic resource permit would not have a significant adverse effect on the environment, and that no environmental impact statement will be required for the reasons set forth in the secret negative declaration for a type-one action dated March 20, 2014, prepared by the planning department.
Second.
It's moved in second that the planning board as lead agency hereby determines that the approval of the Vassar College Science Building amended site plan and aquatic resource permit would not have a significant adverse effect on the environment, and no environmental impact statement will be required for the reasons set forth in the secret negative declaration for a type-one action dated March 20, 2014, prepared by the planning department. Call a question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carries five to zero.
I move that the planning board grant conditional amended site plan, site plan and aquatic resource permit approvals for the Vassar College Science Building project as amended, and reaffirm previous architectural approval of May 17, 2012, for which no amendment was proposed, subject to the following, one through 13.
Second.
Okay, if I might amend that, I was going to add 14, that makes sure they include the SWIP.
Oh, okay.
And, just 15, just for the record, that they're submitting letters to the health of that tree.
I think this is, no, it includes town engineer's comments.
That's true, it does. Alright, I take that one out, we'll just add 14, that will include the documentation about the health of that tree.
Okay.
Okay. Now, the second, okay, I move that the planning board grant conditional amended site plan and aquatic resource permit approvals for Vassar College Science Building project as amended, and reaffirm previous architectural approval of May 17, 2012, for which no amendment was proposed, subject to the following, one through 13, and we add 14 to submit the letter regarding the health of that tree that's going to be removed. Call a question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carries five to zero.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Okay, let's see, that one. Fairview Commons.
Yes.
Number four on the agenda, secret review and recommendation to the town board regarding a proposed planned residential overlay district, a prod, be confused with a shot designation, and subsequent site plan and land contour permit review. Construction of 170-unit apartment complex and 8,500-square-foot support space, 66 Fulton Street, zoned FC Fairview Center, 13.895 acres, unlisted action park, park associates owner.
You got a presentation.
I just don't want them to do shoddy work. Oh, here we go with the screening. Carol? Oh, we've been here before.
Actually, we can see it pretty good right here.
Yeah, we can see it down there. Kelly, these are working.
An annual button over there.
Earth to Kelly.
All the audiences.
You got pictures of the kids, wow.
Since you came back, you've improved.
Fine. Ooh, you don't want to show that file.
Well, the, when it, when I put it, when I put it on the thing, it blows up my whole screen, I can't see.
Yeah, we could see.
You had, you had that map up before.
Yeah, it's just, um, 17. There we go, right. Okay. Now, I got it. Sorry, it's there until we do anything. Okay.
Presentation, Duchess College.
No.
Nice.
Put me out. Consec.
My kids are off that week, so we're going down south.
Whatever it is you did.
Whatever you did. That's what you went last year for Easter, right?
We always go to, that's South Carolina. Mark?
No, but you had it working, you had it working before. It's not your cable, it was transmitting whatever it was supposed to.
He didn't change cables.
It's a Windows machine, it, do you have the Alt F7? Or there's an F7 key, you have to press to get.
In the building?
No.
Alt, Alt F7?
It's something like that. Something with the F7 key.
There's a key with a picture of a screen on it.
No, that's volume.
Would you like to borrow my Android pilot, tablet?
We may have to skip it.
I picked up a HP.
Oh, wait, it's this.
You're going to curse at us now, Kelly.
This better be really good after this, huh?
Your mouth shut.
Kelly, too.
PC. Are you there?
It's not, there's like nothing.
Same song, Galaxy.
Mine's, mine's a lot. Shouldn't, I like it.
How do I get back?
That 8.1?
It's no because it each, you know, doesn't.
For those old Asian people, like to make the link back to school. It's not that, it's not that, too.
The Windows 8?
Yeah, it's 8.1. But Samsung has a.
This is deja vu.
Has it that on? Gives you the, start button, all the.
Really? I guess we had a coffee break. Samsung's got, we got coffee. They got a pretty good way of product. Good figure, right?
He's gone? He's not there?
McDonald's, McDonald's is here.
McDonald's, McDonald's is here.
The person who was trained, all the stuff in there is set up correctly.
Probably all of Carol's full here.
Two weeks.
There's something.
All right, wait, maybe they just reset it up.
It just switched to HCMI.
I don't think I've been.
Carol, is this like, this sort of deja vu?
We were supposed to all get trained here.
The Sandy switch on or off.
It just keeps doing. All right, we may have to do it without it.
Did something?
I ain't do anything.
Was it the same cable you had with the first?
I'm wiggling my nose, there's no place like home.
Do you have your ruby slippers on?
What happened to paper? It looks great.
Whatever you did the first time worked.
In the 80s and 90s.
It's the guy in the back.
The other day, it has a full HCMI cable.
It keeps like coming popping back. All right, I can do it without it, but. Oh, you'll have to use your projector for yours.
It's incredible.
Yay!
Don't touch it.
Don't anyone move. It was.
We were just about to have Phil Greeley tell traffic jokes.
All right, are we good?
See, they don't let me out much.
Okay, Kelly.
It's up on the side screen back there, too.
Oh, good, so everyone can see.
It's great, if it works. If anybody wants to.
Okay, so, in, in closing.
We will get started, yeah. Thank you for the approval, that was great. Okay, Kelly Liebel with Page Park Associates, Rodney Morrison is here with, um, LRC Engineering, Phil Greeley is here, and Peter Karas is also here, so we'll try to keep it concise and not go overboard, but we just wanna, uh, this project, I think, has been talked about a lot throughout the town, and we just really wanna give everyone the facts, um, so we can focus on the real issue at hand. So hopefully, everyone knows where this property is, I don't have anything to point at. Um, this is an approximately 14-acre parcel of land, which is just east of the Marist College Housing Complex. How does this, oh, in here, and here's the Marist College Housing Project. Um, if you were Route 9, you'd be over here. Um, the property to the, or the road to the north is, um, Fulton Street, and the road to the south is Cedar Avenue, so it's, it's, uh, bordered by both of those town roads. Just to the west is the CSX rail line, so the rail line's gone, but the property that's owned by CSX is still there. There's a small property between us and, um, and Maris, which is right here, and this is a vello paving, so I think that's probably something that most of you know, that's where that is. This property is five acres, or I should say it was five acres. We recently consolidated all of these parcels, so it's one lot, so I know there were some concerns that everyone had relative to property lines. So for all intents and purposes, it's a, it's a, um, one lot 14-acre parcel. The property is in the FC zoning district, which is the Fairview Common Zoning District, and this was recently, um, part of the prod, the planned residential overlay district that the town board, um, recently applied or approved. So we're here tonight, I'll get to the end and then I'll come back to the beginning, we're here tonight to start the process. Um, we are seeking approval from the town board for the prod overlay. We already met with the town board, and they referred us over to the planning board, which is the process. So now, we're starting with the planning board, um, hopefully, you will, um, set tonight to declare your intent to be lead agency, and we'll go through the seeker process, um, with the board. Upon your site plan approval, if you grant site plan approval, we would go back to, um, the town board after seeker. They would apply the prod, and then we would get final site plan approval from the planning board. So it's kind of a back and forth and back and forth, but we'll work closely with the town board, um, we've been working with, uh, Mike Sifon, who is the councilman for this ward. Um, obviously, what we're proposing is a, um, market-rate apartment complex, we're proposing, um, 170-unit complex. If you go one more, it's a little bit easier to see, so that plan is the same plan that's here, if anyone has a hard time looking at it. Um, what we're proposing is access, let me see if I can use this, access from Fulton Street. Is it easier if I look at, do this with you, or that?
It's a little dark now over there.
Okay, so we're proposing access.
Can you do two at once?
I'm good, I'm not that good, right, exactly. Give me that green thing and I can do it. Um, we're proposing access from Fulton Street, right here. Now, this is, it's hard to see on that plan, but what we're proposing to do, we had, um, comments with Mark Pfeiffer a while back, um, relative to this particular access, um, for this complex, and it was discussed with him and with some of the town board members that they'd like to see the vello entrance and our entrance consolidated to one single en- entrance. So it's sort of a unique situation where you have two competing uses, so you have an industrial paving use and you have a residential use. And we're working with that adjoining property owner to come up with something that works for him. His particular property line is literally right outside his door, so you can see it from that aerial photo. So we wanna work with him so that we have a combined access, and immediately after you pull into this combined access, he can pull off with his large industrial trucks, you know, proper turning raises and so forth, we'll work with the town engineer. We have some parking for him on our property, because he doesn't have any parking right now, um, and then he can get back into his site and use his site. Our residents would come into the facility through, um, this entrance, and then they would proceed on into the site. Um, there's a total of three buildings. We've worked, um, very, very hard with LRC and with Lisco McCormick Van Voorhees on coming up with a plan that uses the land. So we've been working on this project for a long time. The area that we've selected is the area that's primarily flat, um, so that we've placed the buildings in there. There's three buildings, they are, um, four-story buildings, and again, it's a, um, total of 170 units. This is again, market-rate housing, just so we get it out there, it's not student housing, so we can diffuse that issue. Um, will students likely rent here? Sure, but so will doctors and nurses and residents that are looking for, um, upscale housing, uh, apartment complex in this community. Um, we're proposing a combination of two-bedroom and four-bedroom units, 75% four-bedroom, 25% two-bedroom. Why did we do that? We hired a national firm out of Washington DC that are experts in multifamily housing, and we asked them to look at this area. So they did a study, they did a market analysis, and they came back and said to us, this is what this area needs. Um, so that's how we came up with our breakdown. We can provide that to you if we need to at a later date. There is a small commercial, commercial component to this facility, which is up in the front in this building, that's right on Fulton. It's approximately 8,500 square feet. That building would include the sales office, which will be monitored 24/7, probably something like a gym, a media room, amenities for the people who are in the complex. As you enter the site then, from there, the remainder of the buildings are the four-story mix of, um, the apartment complex. From a dollar perspective, this is a huge influx for the town of Poughkeepsie. It's probably a 15 to $20 million project, so it's lots of taxes for the town, it's, um, purchases of sales, it's jobs, it's construction, um, so we're very, very excited about this. The parking, um, has been designed consistent with the prod and the, um, the, the underlying zoning. The requirement is 1.5 parking spaces per unit, which would be 255 spaces, we're actually providing 311, so we're providing more than what's required. The commercial requires four per thousand, which would be 34, we're providing 35, so there's a total of 346 parking spaces, um, on the site, and we think we need it. This is gonna be a gated community, the town board asked, why are you gating it? Well, we're gating it because we have an adjoining, um, college right next to us, and we know that they're parking light, um, we wanna make sure that this isn't the parking area for, you know, other people who live in the area. We're hoping that this cleans up a lot of the problems that are in this area relative to, um, you know, people living in existing single-family houses. So the front entrance off of Fulton would be gated. We designed the site so that we have an extensive open space area. So this area that's in the dark green is approximately one-third of the site, it's, um, 32% or 4.5 acres that we're proposing to leave, um, as open space. And if you look at this plan, this is the existing conditions, that particular area is very heavily wooded, we picked it for a reason, it's got a hill there, and it provides a really great buffer between, um, the heavy, uh, student housing that you have, then you would have the multifamily use, and then you have a buffer between that and the single-family residences that are in the balance of, uh, this community. From an engineering perspective, uh, we've already met with water and sewer, so we can understand, you know, how we can accommodate our needs, I think you have their comments in there, but, uh, water, we're, uh, hopefully gonna pull off of Cedar through Sunset, right here. Sewer, we'll go the other way, we'll go over to Fulton, we'll have a pump station on site. Um, stormwater, obviously, everything would be contained on site. We're proposing to use a series of, um, areas for porous pavement, which is this darker area here and here, so that we could use some, um, green technology, um, relative to, uh, to that particular design. So we have a lot tonight, so I'm gonna let, um, everyone else speak, but we can circle back and answer any questions that you have, um, after this.
Thank you. I love going after Kelly, there's no engineering left to do. Um, I will just talk for a minute about how we got to this point, as Kelly said, the, the level of our submission is working towards a seeker determination, so we can have the PR OD applied. So with that said, and as we've seen through the comments received from the consultants, there are, there are a number of site details that we have left to go. We have lighting to design for the site, we have landscape design left to do for the site, uh, as a couple of particular matters. But we spent several months, as Kelly suggested, with LMV, uh, our landscape architectural team, uh, LMV's architectural work, uh, considering the site, walking the property. Uh, this plan says PR1, but it really represents about the eighth concept in the last, uh, 18 months that we've done. Originally, just as an example, as long as they don't point this, if I point this at me, do I get hurt? In this area here, we had originally designed one potential, uh, use or building up there, and we took that out as we looked at the slopes, and as Kelly said, ultimately, we've tried to bring together a, a design that works with the land. Uh, the shape of the buildings in particular, uh, we have set up such that they create areas that will be landscape areas, that will be gathering areas. There is a, uh, center green area there, these are, as we say, kind of 50% placeholders for the landscape design that will go in those locations. Uh, we've made pedestrian pathway connections, we've done very detailed grading to ensure that everything is accessible, that the grades are nice. Um, we've shown, uh, just some, some spotting, as I said, of trees and such, so that you can kind of perceive where we wanna lead the design, but, uh, what's very important to us at this stage of the process is to get, uh, your opinion and buy-in on the layout, uh, and the way we've kind of conceived the property before we finish those details. Uh, Kelly had mentioned the entrance in particular, we've gone through several different designs for it, uh, we've tried to bring it further to the, uh, east so that it meets up and helps with the existing Sunset Avenue. Uh, we've created a very respectful area for the vello property to the west, uh, we've actually allocated some parking there and given them a separate turn-in. We've run truck turn movements through it, so as I said, the, the engineering, the, the base engineering that sets the viability of the whole thing's been completed, so that's, that's the position that we're in at the moment. Uh, you will see in a little while, while here, as soon as Peter can get his sketch-up models going, uh, the results of our grading visualization to date, and I think you'll be pretty impressed with that. So with that said, I wanna give this to Phil Greeley, so we can talk to you about traffic. Uh, placeholder areas again, so that we can, there are just areas that we've set aside to potentially do, uh, some landscape thought to, uh, I don't, we don't know what the features are at this point.
It's probably, is that stormwater? Is that what he's, is that what you're pointing at?
He thought it was a water hazard.
Oh.
It is, it is a, it is a, it is a chipping area for Neil to practice.
No, we don't have a pool proposed.
Yeah, yeah.
We have, or we have porous pavement, we have underground infiltration, soils in the areas are very good, uh, and in particular, the porous pavement, uh, we've done soils tests throughout, and it's positioned in this particular way so that we infiltrate water back into the ground throughout the whole property, not just in one place, so it's, it's pretty, it's pretty detailed design in certain areas to make sure that everything is viable as we've done it.
Are there any, uh, recreational, outdoor recreational areas that, would it be a playground or?
At the moment, it's, uh, it's all to be evolved, that's one of the things we'd like to hear, is feedback, of course, as we go. The way this plan appears, it's passive in nature.
And, and we, I think we envision, just knowing that property in the area that we've reserved as open space, that that would be a great, you know, kind of trail area for people to walk through, um, but we need to evolve that first, uh, try to figure out if everyone has buy-in on the building location, and then we can really start to do some of those streets gate improvements and the, um, recreational improvements.
Uh, good evening, Philip Greeley from Mesa Consulting. Uh, we have, uh, prepared a traffic study for the project, uh, as indicated, 170 units. Uh, from a peak hour standpoint, you're looking at somewhere between 90 to 110 vehicle trips that would be generated in a one-hour period. Uh, in terms of the area that we focused on, you know, primarily, you know, along Fulton Street, uh, Fairview Avenue Extension, Fairview, uh, Sunset and the Access, Route 9, uh, the Shopping Center and Beck Place, and then over to, uh, 9G and Fulton. So, uh, at this time, we had prepared traffic study, I understand your consultant has reviewed it, provided some comments, um, in terms of, uh, we'll be responding to those, uh, the focus of those comments, uh, you know, typical, uh, items that were asked for in addition, some additional site distance information, uh, summarization of accidents, um, and, and then some other clarifications. Now, in terms of the traffic study, I wanna point out, we, we haven't taken any, uh, reduction in trips if there are students living here in terms of peak hours. We've run it at, you know, 170 apartments, full traffic generation, so those numbers reflect that. If there were students here, you know, the, the traffic in terms of peak hour numbers would, would go down, but again, uh, that's the focus, uh, that we've had. Now, in terms of, of traffic, um, just really focusing in, the, the study had identified, you know, a couple of items, you know, a few recommendations relative to some signing, um, we're gonna continue to evolve to, to address pedestrians, pedestrian movements are important, so we'll be working with the site plan, uh, work, you know, to, to deal with that. Um, in terms of traffic conditions, just real generally, uh, you know, Route 9 in Fulton, uh, since the, you know, college axis was changed, it seems to be functioning a lot better, of course, uh, as you come away from Route 9, which you don't really see it on this map, but, uh, you know, the intersection of Beck Place and the Shopping Center, um, if you remember when the, uh, college had built the dormitory, there was concerns about that, and one of the things that was put into place was a restriction, uh, coming out of Beck Place, no left turns between 2 and 6 in the afternoon. Now, what's interesting is, even now doing traffic counts, there are movements, there are people, you know, mostly students, that make that left turn in the afternoon. So from a, from an interesting standpoint, uh, you know, there's, there's difficulty at that intersection, but the volumes are making that movement, so it's kind of a, an oxymoron in terms of traffic, uh, analysis, because they're able to make that movement. The, the real issue, I think, at the, that intersection is even more so driven by the amount of traffic coming out of the Shopping Center, the left turns coming out of the Shopping Center, you know, somewhat the left turns going in. Uh, we had identified that, you know, it's, it's a candidate for signalization, but it's really, it's, it's been talked about for quite a while. I know, uh, your, uh, consultants, the engineering consultant and, and traffic consultant, asked us to look at a, the potential of a, of a roundabout at that intersection. Uh, the only thing I'll say, uh, at that, it would require land to, to fit a roundabout that would meet the minimum requirements to accommodate truck movements and fire vehicles. It would require land both from the Shopping Center, and even though the, the pavement is pretty wide in Fulton, by the time you get, you know, the proper radii and diameter in there, it would require land from both the Shopping Center and from the Maris side where the parking lot is. So, you know, we'll address that, uh, as part of our responses to your consultant, but, um, you know, I think that is an area that there's been a lot of discussion, and now with Maris, you know, had identified that they're, they're planning to do some additional things there, um, you know, there'll be more opportunities maybe to, uh, deal with that. Uh, the other area really of focus, um, uh, at, at Route 9G and Fulton, uh, we found, you know, in the afternoon especially, uh, left, making left turns from Fulton. afternoon especially, left, making left turns from Fulton onto 9G is difficult. Again, it's a question of at what point does that intersection need to be signaledized? You know, our recommendation at this point is to continue to monitor because there's other traffic that's, you know, occurring there. It really seems to be, you know, primarily a peak hour basis, although there's times of the day where it is difficult making that left turn movement. Again, there, even if it's a peak hour basis, DOT will not allow a signal unless it meets their warrant. So I think that's pretty much kind of a quick synopsis. We'll respond to your, your consultant had some very detailed comments, which are pretty straightforward, and I just wanted to highlight those few areas, so. All right? Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Peter Karas with Taconic Site Design and Landscape Architecture, based right in the next town over in Pleasant Valley. And we are specialists in visual simulations and 3D modeling. And this is, you've seen this picture in the previous presentation, the existing conditions from Google Earth. I'm going to flip everybody around and flip the site over, and you'll see the reason why once we get into some of the visuals. So now for the fun part. I get the, I get the joy of working on the fun parts of the project. So here's our existing condition, and again, I'll point out the heavily wooded area along Fairview Avenue. We really break down the site and the surrounding neighborhood by looking at aerial photos, going out into the site, using, using elements like Google Maps Street View to understand the surrounding neighborhood, where the existing structures are. We look at the civil engineering drawings and the topography, and really, we start to apply surfaces to that site plan, and we also start to build terrains in three dimensions. So you'll notice some of the shadowing above the buildings and below. That's indicative of the grading that Rodney's put so much effort into. Some of the surrounding neighborhood off of Fairview and Cedar, a little close-up here. We then apply the landscaping, where the existing trees are staying, where some of the proposed landscaping is, to give us our plan view. So just to orient everybody, here's Fulton, Fairview at the top, Cedar on the side, and then our three main buildings that make up the project. And when we've, and when we model this in three dimensions, we're able to get a real good sense of what the visuals of this project are going to be. So a bird's eye aerial showing the site. You'll see some of the off-site improvements, the existing Marist housing, the spine that comes up from Route 9, and then the three buildings in their, in their current condition with the associated parking. And with this 3D modeling, we can fly around and we can look at this project from any angle and any elevation. And I will point out, this is not an artist's rendering. This is not someone's interpretation of what's happening. This is a two-scale model of the current proposal. So in essence, everything is to scale and proportion, and we're able to convey what this project is going to look like. Here's a view of the entry from Fulton. Looking in, you'll see the new building to the left and that existing paving company's property here to the right, and the entrance off of Fulton.
Can you go back? I assume the abellod property looked like that when you're done?
We tried to put all the crap on it, but we couldn't.
Right. But some of the limitations of this is, is there's some interpretation of.
That was actually Neil's comment.
Here's a street-level view of the entry from Fulton to give you sort of a human perspective of how things will look or are proposed to look. We've thrown in some entry walls, some, some entry sequence. Here, we've now entered the site. We're past the entrance to the paving, the adjoining property owner, and this shows the traffic pattern, the main road sweeping to the right in front of the buildings, parking to the left, and you can start to see some of the cut slopes in the back and the proportion of the buildings on site. Here's a view a little further in the site, the entry driveway along, along the eastern property line. The buildings actually sit up a little in elevation from the driveway and creates that separation of vehicle and the residential component. It's probably about a four or five-foot retaining wall.
What's on the right, what I'm looking at, what's the light thing on the other side?
That's a light pole.
Okay.
So we've, we have some placeholders for.
No, I meant the white sort of band.
Oh, it's a fence, a screening fence. The rear part of that adjoining property is a yard with equipment, so we're trying to screen that and soften that from inside our site. So here's an entry view. Another bird's eye, that center courtyard, that center gathering space for people that live here, we're envisioning, you know, an accessory structure, open air, a place for, for people to be able to gather in a quasi-park-like setting on site. Here's a, here's a street view looking into the site, into that center courtyard to give you a real sense of scale of those buildings. Pulling out, you start to see some of the surrounding neighborhood off of Cedar Avenue, and you can see the distance between the proposed development and those existing neighboring structures, and all the vegetation that is proposed to remain along the rear side of the site to create that buffer, not only vegetation, but a buffer in elevation between the higher end of the Fairview-Cedar intersection. Here's a really panoramic view pulling out. You can really see that neighborhood off Fairview and Cedar, and, and the development pushed down to the west and north of the site. And swinging back around to that Fulton-Fairview intersection, this gives you a real sense of the amount of vegetation and undisturbed area that's going to remain along the Fairview Avenue portion of the property. And swinging back around, here's the proposed entry to give you that real broad perspective of scale and proportion of the property. And just to prove to everybody that this, you know, this, this system and way of doing 3D modeling works. This is a pool that we did, I did right here.
This is not on our plan.
What this is intended to show you is, the images on the left are a 3D model. The images on the right is actual constructed project. And I'll just point out a couple of things. See the shadow lines? We're able to geolocate the site and throw sun angles based on month of the year, day, time of day. Below here, you'll see the long deck, the angle. So, so we're really doing this to scale. We're really trying to assess what the visuals of this project is going to be so that we can make some really good planning decisions.
Thank you, Peter.
Very nice.
Okay.
That's neat stuff.
Isn't that neat?
Amazing what you can do with computers.
Yeah.
Good time.
Good. So that's our presentation. So we're happy to answer any additional questions that you have, and go from there.
Thanks. So you're going to get a apartment there? No. No. No one.
No garage.
Very neat. Okay, let's see.
Maybe I'll let Liz take a shot?
Sure. Thanks.
Well, it's her name on there.
That is, that is my name. Hi. I'm glad to see the simulations. Actually, it kind of reminds me of Simtown a little bit, but it's nice. When I first looked at this, this is not a memo, what I'm saying right now, I looked at this, I thought, great, apartments in the middle of a bunch of places where there are lots of, you know, opportunities for employment, the area needs the housing, which is good. So in general, I think that's positive. The first part of my memo comes right out and, and just says, we have all these questions, though, however, all these question marks, you know. The concern, of course, that was expressed is that it's all going to be student housing. And, and one of the questions is, why aren't there any one- or three-bedroom units? What is the intended market? Of course, you know, there's a limit to how much that can be regulated. And then one of the other questions I have right up front is to provide some kind of comparison for the existing zoning and what's proposed, because they're very, very different. And just for example, the concern that some of staff expressed about the fact that it could be all student apartments would be two persons per bedroom, four-bedroom units, et cetera, et cetera. So, you know, we're a typical multiplier. You might end up with 650 to 770 people in normal households. If it was predominantly students, it could be a much higher number, closer to 1,100. So, so those kinds of, you know, that kind of narrative would be helpful in terms of the planning board being able to assess, you know, what's this, what's the project really going to be? And I understand from speaking with Rich Pearson that the traffic approach was a conservative approach, so that's good. I know in here, there was checked off the land contour permit, and if you could kind of explain that a little bit, it would help us know where we are in the context of things.
Sure. I meant to cover that in my overview, and I was, I forgot about that. So thank you, Liz, for bringing that up. We are including in our application a request for a land contour change permit, and there's a reason that we're asking for that. When we conclude SEAKER for this particular project, we, at that point, would like to seek approval to be able to start the grading on the site. It's a pretty aggressive construction schedule for us, so we can start the site work while we're finishing up the site plan approval for this project, which is completely legal. It's within SEAKER. I'll defer to your attorney to, to advise you on that. But we will be providing you, as part of our next submission, with a sheet that is called Land Contour Change Permit. And what will be on that will be the proposed grading for the property and what we're hoping to start to do with the commencement of SEAKER, which would be some of the installation of the utility, primarily along the main road, which will house the water and the sewer lines, and to start to prepare the property for the stormwater. Again, the reason for that is so that we can gain a month or two months while we're finishing SEAKER, will be finished SEAKER, and seeking site plan approval and the ultimate prod approval from the town board. So in your next package, you'll, you'll receive that sheet.
Okay. All right. Thanks. So anyway, my project summary talks a lot about what are we dealing with? Let's see. Address the possibility that there could be two residents per bedroom?
Yeah, I wanted to just talk about that really quick so we could just diffuse the issue, and I understand why you're asking that. We can certainly reply in writing, but this is market rate apartments. And so are we next to Marist? Yes. Is it likely that some student will rent this? Yes. But this is being run as a market rate apartment complex, so it's open to anyone in the area that wants to rent there. This is not intended to be a reckless dorm or student housing where we have multiple students in rooms beyond which they're designed for. We're going to own this. We're going to manage this. So it's very different than, I think, what you're seeing in some of the surrounding houses. This is a safe building design. Everything is sprinkled in this building, and we intend to manage it as an apartment complex for many different types of people. So I can address the students any way you want me to, but I just, I want to diffuse the student issue so that we can move forward with this as a, as an apartment complex that has a combination of two-bedroom and four-bedroom units.
That would be good to have more, maybe to provide some different scenarios for the board to think about. And the other, I have a comment about a network of pedestrian pathways, because this is just the perfect infill site where you really want to connect all the adjoining streets. And I'm also aware of Duchess Community College, you know, employees and students living in that general area, so that's another thing to think about. Otherwise, so there are a lot of comments, a lot of questions in my comments, and I don't know if there has been any thought given to affordable housing or one- or three-bedroom units, so that's another thing, if you could address that. Because we have a lot of question marks, what I've recommended procedurally is circulation for intent-to-be lead agency, if the planning board's comfortable with that, but deferring action on the prod designation recommendation and all that until we have more information.
Don?
Even though, even though we mentioned that this thing, project has moved along quite, quite a ways, we're still obviously waiting for a SWIP. So a good portion of our comment letter deals with things that we're looking for there. We're looking for some revisions to the engineer's report regarding sewer. And I just had a question for Phil. The, the site distance at the entrance, as you're exiting, would be a site distance to the right. I'm assuming you already looked at that, and is that adequate back to the, I'll call it a slip lane, but it's.
Yes. Yeah. I think one of the comments from your traffic consultant was, we're going to provide all the site distances compared to the ASTRO criteria. But yeah, we have looked at that in terms of ability to accommodate the appropriate sightlines, and we'll be presenting that as we move forward.
Because one of the, one of the concerns of the highway superintendent was possibly to widen the Fairview Avenue intersection.
Yes.
And get rid of that.
Mm-hmm.
So, okay.
Yeah, we have some other recommendations on additional signing and other work, too.
Okay, thank you. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Carol, any other?
Just a couple of things. The 3D site modeling is, is, is a nice touch. It really helps. However, I'm, I'm wondering why there wasn't more of the 3D modeling to the rear of the property, where there's as much as a 35-foot contour being changed. It seems that most of this was helping to visualize the front, which is relatively level. I think that would be beneficial because you have an awful lot of land contouring to the rear to attach it to the existing conditions.
There's one cut right in the back.
But it's a significant cut?
Sure, it is.
Or, you know, significant.
There's a significant part of that hill that will remain, but we can, we can float it around and show you anywhere from here.
Okay. I think that'd be helpful, because like I said, the front is relatively level and easy to visualize, but the back is, is quite significant. And as far as the land contouring that you'd like to get a jump on, my only comment with that is regarding the, the moratorium that has been imposed, obviously, through the D E C and through the Army Corps about the tree cutting from April 1st to April 30th, October 31st. So, you know, you've got a week and a half until waiting again till end of October, beginning of November. So that might be an issue. Some minor comments on the EF values, the values provided in the EF, but we have an Army Corps permit that was issued in 2012 for fill of the wetlands, and that was permitted to fill up to .015 acres, or about 650 feet of, right, of the stream. It looks like it's significantly more than 650 feet, according to my cursory calculations. You know, that, that, it looks like more like 250 linear feet of stream, and if you take that only being two and a half feet wide, there's your 650 feet, but it's significantly more than that. And that permit is also due to expire on May 22nd of this year, so.
Yeah.
You're going to have to go through that whole process again after you recalculate and give us some real good values, because I don't, I don't think that's correct. I think that may have been from.
We'll, we'll look at it, because I actually thought it was less, but we'll look at that and get you the, the right calculations.
Okay.
And we're aware that that permit was set to expire.
Okay. And the water quality cert that goes along with that, so just need a little more work on that.
Right.
A couple of questions, some personal comments. I like the idea that you left a green space facing the residential area, which is great. Number two, I agree with Liz. I think this project will bring people to live and to, to benefit business owners in the area, because, you know, like Home Depot and Culinary Institute and all that, it's quite a bit, you know, people travel and sometimes they don't have a car, so they have to use transportation. With this, will be helpful, so people live here and they'll basically walk to, you know, to Marist College or Home Depot or so forth and so on. So I think I agree with that. I think it's a, it's a benefit. Can you give me an idea of the price range of apartments?
I wish I could. We did have a study, and I know, I think Liz, I think, had asked for some of that information, so we'll get that together and give you.
It's too early.
Yeah, we have to just do some more. I wish I could. We did have a study, and I know, I think, um, Liz, I think, had asked for some of that information, so we'll get that together-
And it's too early.
Yeah, we have to just do some more construction calculations, but, um, we'll get that to you.
And the only thing I'm concerned about, uh, the business of L's, um, entrance there with the trucks and summer and things like that, um, well, I, I think, again, it's great. Um, and with the, with the Marist students, personally, I think it would be a benefit if they're moving to buildings, because we alleviate the complaints that we have from the residents of Fairview. And we had a group of residents, I believe, last year that, you know, so hopefully they'll move in. It'll be your problem then.
(laughing)
But, uh, I, I'd like to see that, and, uh, and since it's, it's a gay community, then it'll be more as a control-
Right.
...type of, uh, residence.
Thank you.
All right, so you got a long way to go, and it'll be more, obviously, it'll be more questions coming up.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Carol.
The bike rack.
If there's going to be Marist students living there.
Why don't we put a bike rack on this thing?
You need to have some accommodation for it.
Yep.
And, and I, I agree with the pedestrian, you know, there's a playground right over here and a park, so we need to, uh, get people out sidewalk connection out to that.
Mm-hmm.
Sidewalk and Cedar. Uh, it'd be great to have sidewalks on Fulton, too. I don't know what portion of it you could do, uh, as part of your site plan.
Yeah, I know that was discussed, um, in the comments, too, and so Fulton's kind of a funny street, and I know, you know, I was involved with Marist when we did the spine, and we did the, the pedestrian bridge, so I was on that team that did that. And the reason that, obviously, you all know this, the reason that Marist did that was because they didn't want the kids walking on Fulton Street. They wanted them down the center of the property.
Focus on there.
Um, so Fulton's kind of a, a funny street to put sidewalks on, and we can certainly discuss this, but Cedar Avenue has sidewalks, and, um, there's a reason that the sidewalks are on that side, and they're not on the Fulton Street side.
Just say, well, it, there's the whole mall there with the Home Depot.
I know. I, no, I understand that.
Whoever else is coming into there.
Yeah.
At some point.
It's just a funny street, and I know that Marist controls really most of that property, so we'll, we'll have to reach out to them and see, um, what they think about it. Again, they made a concerted effort to try to keep the kids off of Fulton Street, and we'll, we'll talk to them.
Yeah, and I envision, you know, that at least some Marist students will be living there, so-
Sure.
They need to walk to class and back and forth.
Absolutely.
Some way. I, uh, the bike, the county's doing a new bike pedestrian plan right now, and, uh, I don't know if it's in the plan yet, but I'll take a look. That, that rail spur should, should at some point be a path to the rail, to the walkway to the Hudson.
Yeah.
And that would be-
We would love to connect.
-a great amenity for both the college and that, and, and just as well, as well as this project. And, uh, which necessitates the need for bike racks. But, uh, I guess I'd like to, you know, from a parking standpoint, I like to add the porous pavement in, in that area. It helps with the, helps eliminate stormwater ponds, I assume, and-
Yeah.
And, uh-
Some egg bowls.
Make, make sure you have, you know, shade in the parking lot, some trees.
Yeah, we have a long way to go with that landscaping. We just wanted to try to start placeholders, like he had said for a-
How many to, 170 apartments, how many total bedrooms does that add up to about?
I don't have that, so I'll give it to you.
You don't have that number? You don't have the-
Maybe I do have that.
The breakdown of, how many eight-four and how many two?
I had 510, if it's 75% four-bedroom.
Okay.
Plus 170, right? No, plus, yeah.
It was like six something.
All right.
It was like in the 600s.
Six, six hundred something.
Yeah.
No, 510 plus, uh-
Six eighty.
Eighty-five.
Yeah, because it was in the 600 range. That sounds right.
Six twenty, six thirty, something like that.
Okay. I'll get you the breakdown, though, Carl.
All right, thanks.
Thanks, Carl.
Um, I just have one more comment, I think. Fulton, I guess, you know, you don't have a play, a play structure on this site, uh-
A what structure?
A playground structure of any kind.
Not yet. All the recreational stuff, we really want to lay out, once we get a consensus, that this is the layout that we're going to move on with. We like this. We've gone through, I think Rodney said this was iteration E. For me, I've been working on this project for a long time, and it's, we've done a lot of different iterations, so we want to get to that point where we lay out recreational stuff.
Sounds like a lot of thought has gone into it.
Yeah.
But the, the, the park, the Fairview Park with the playground is-
It's right there.
Is walking distance as well to consider. I don't know about the combined entrance with the, you know, residents getting stuck behind a paving truck trying to negotiate out, but-
Yeah, his, his hours may be off-peak with us, but we'll, we're continuing to work with him. I think he's back. He was away, so we'll continue to work with, uh, Billy over there.
We have looked at many different options at that intersection, where you have, and we, we've really, really tried to create something that separates, you know, the non-paving traffic from the, from the apartment complex traffic. So, uh, that's, as Kelly said, that's the iteration that we're, we're at at the moment, and hopefully, uh, by pulling it into our site a little bit, uh, creating a peel-off for them there. Now, we know that, and potentially, as we said, basically closing that frontage that's right in front of his building-
Yep.
-is a big, is a big step forward.
Yeah, I'm sure that, I mean, the paving traffic is a, a small part of it. It won't be-
I would suspect, once his trucks leave in the morning-
They leave early, yeah.
Right.
But we're continuing to meet with him. He was away. They liked the concept of the breakthrough.
Okay.
Um-
Plus the parking spaces, I'm sure.
Uh, they should like a lot.
Yeah, I actually, um, received a call this afternoon from Bill Ovello. He's, he's coming in next Wednesday to, to talk to us, um, and Kelly's correct, he just got back from Florida.
Right.
Uh, last thing is, I don't know if there's any spot for a green roof amenity for, for something in the, to consider. Maybe-
Can somebody give a green roof?
Maybe in the, uh, the upfront, the upfront building-
Yeah.
-with the amenities.
Yeah, we'll look at it and see.
Some garden plots.
Okay.
Who knows? Something. So, it's just a thought.
Yeah, that's definitely possible. I mean, even in, uh, and you can't see it on that plan, as we've, the grading that's in the pages that you've been given show some pretty, uh, judicious area behind, you know, there's a cut slope like Carol's, uh, referencing, but at the base of that cut slope, it's level. So, we have room for, uh, bio retention, we have room for garden plots. There's, there's space to be developed into amenities and use.
No pool planned, though.
On top.
Rooftop pool, then.
Good, Carl?
Yeah, I'm good with it. Look, great project.
Uh, I mean, I think the, uh, the market analysis, the pricing of the, of the, uh, units and so forth is going to have a important play in how much, um, this is going to be Marist Park, Marist Apartments. I mean, true market, you know, level housing there is, is relatively expensive for students. But the problem is, is that if it is expensive and they still want to go in, they're going to load up each bedroom. I mean, you know, that's, so that's always a problem. Uh, the other thing is, is this whole project, if it gets filled up, is going to really add a lot of incentive to that shopping center. I mean, right now, we've got a lot of empty space in that shopping center, and if you're bringing in a whole new market of people that might use it, at one, it makes the sidewalks more important, because they would have, they, you know, they need a way to access it, and if we can keep cars off the road, that's, that's good. Uh, so sidewalks would be important, but then we also, that we really do need some analysis on what the Marist impact's going to be on this. Uh, and, uh, what kind of control that if there are Marist students there, uh, about the, you know, overloading bedrooms and overloaded apartments.
Yeah, I mean, it, it certainly behooves us to keep that under control.
Right.
It doesn't do us any good to have-
I mean, you know, that could destroy a-
Darren's offered to resign his regular day job and just be the security guy there, so I think we'll be fine.
Take the rent and divide by eight. It's, it's not too unreasonable.
I'm sorry?
You take the rent and divide by eight.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but if it is, they could have more than-
But, but they're doing that in this, you know, in the Fairview area, and, and again, you know, I can sit here and preach to you, but it doesn't do us any good to create that type of setting.
Right. I mean, it just seems like you're spending an awful lot of money for, in my mind, you're spending, this is, this is a good-sized, very expensive project, and I don't think that would be a, invest that kind of money and have that kind of, you know, you wouldn't, you wouldn't build something as nice as this, I wouldn't think.
And let it go, right.
Exactly.
And, and, well, and the other part of that, I mean, Liz brought up affordable housing. Unfortunately, affordable housing in this makes it more attractive.
Yeah, we're not interested in building affordable housing. I can tell you right now that this is not an affordable housing complex. There's certainly places for that, that's not this project.
And, and we need it, but I agree that I don't really think-
Yeah.
...this is an appropriate place for it.
I think it'd be a great spot, and I'm, I'm surprised that Carl missed this. Um, definitely, definitely a couple of electric car charging stations.
I told you, I got you an extra one over there.
Okay. Peter?
Almost missed. Um, I, this one comment, I think it would be very helpful if you could provide a copy of the market study that reflected the four-bedroom, two-bedroom mix, so that we could take a look at that.
Good point.
Would that be okay?
Yep. I'm sorry, I was writing that down.
Thanks. That's all I have.
Thank you.
I'd just like to add one more thing. When, when you're looking and doing your market study, take a look at Arthur Nelson's outlook on demographics, which really kind of talks a lot about young singles and young couples needing rentals. And that's why I was scratching my head about the four-bedroom thing, because, you know, there's definitely going to be demand in this area, and if this area is going to revive itself, we need space for young singles and young couples to live.
Good. Thank you. Rich? No?
I move that the planning board declare its intent to be lead agency to coordinate the environmental review of the proposed project as an unlisted action and authorize the planning department to notify the involved agencies of the board's intent by circulating a notice of said intent, a copy of the AF, and a copy of the application to the identified involved agencies.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. The planning board declares intent to be lead agency to coordinate the environmental, uh, review of the proposed project as an unlisted action and authorize planning department to notify involved agencies of the board's intent by circulating a notice of said intent, a copy of the EA F, and a copy of the application to the identified involved agencies. And call the questions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Proposed, motion carries five to zero.
I move that the planning board defer action on this site plan application pending establishment of a lead agency and direct the applicant to respond to the comments received from the town departments and agencies, uh, and agencies.
That's right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, as we move the seconded, that the planning board defer action on the site plan application pending establishment of a lead agency and direct the applicant to respond to the comments received from the town departments and agencies. Call the question, all town departments and agencies, huh?
Uh, it should also, the list of approval should include the recommendation on the prod, on the prod designation as well.
And the recommendation on the prod, uh, recommenda, prod, yes. Okay.
Include that in.
Okay, you're okay with that?
Second again.
Okay, call the question. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five to zero. And I think, once the town board, if they approve the prod, then, then we will do seeker.
Um, yeah, I think, we have to finish with you, um, we, that, which is why we were-
We'll do seeker.
Hoping to get-
But then you-
Yeah. So, we'll be back, Nick, we'll be back, hopefully, next month and try to drill through some of these comments relative to, um-
Truck's got to go.
-the engineer.
The town board wants to-
And the planner.
Down. The town board wants the entrance.
They, they-
Okay, we're good.
Thank you very much.
I'm just looking.
Okay, number five, Odile Nutt, Dutton.
Favor being told.
O'Neil Dut, O'Neil Dutten.
Paving machine.
One Duchess Avenue Development, recommendations to the town board regarding a waterfront housing overlay designation for WOOD. We got a prod, WOOD, anyway. And subsequent site plan and waterfront consistency review for a proposed waterfront development in the city and town of Poughkeepsie consisting of a total of 396 residential units, 87 of which are in the town, and a 13,800 square foot, uh, feet of retail space, none of which is in the town, on 14.3 acres, 3.8 acres of which is in the town.
Yes.
Plus unspecified property owned by the state of New York, One Duchess Avenue, town portions owned IH heavy industry, city of Poughkeepsie common council is the lead agency, type-one action final EIS on file, O'Neil, O'Neil Group-Dutton LLC and the state of New York owners. That all said.
That's a mouthful.
It's a mouthful. I'll take five. It's true, take five.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Louis Kaufman. I'm with the, uh, the owner and the developer, the O'Neil Group Dutten LLC. I, uh, would like to just go briefly over, uh, the project and the changes that have been made since, uh, we initially brought this to the town, uh, several years ago, actually.
What, no PowerPoint?
No.
All right.
I feel a little naked now.
I don't know, that's three demerits, guys.
My engineer from Mazur Engineering, Andrew Featherston, is going to go over more of the details on the site plan, but, um, here's my electronic, uh, presentation. Um, initially, when we came, uh, we initially proposed the project, it was three larger buildings, one of which was in the, uh, town, two in the city, because it's basically broken up, two-thirds in the city and one-third in the town. It's right on the, um, Hudson River, and a, a large component of the, uh, project is the, is a public space, a public access, uh, public park, if you will. That's the Greenway Trail, uh, the extension of the Greenway Trail that's running up and down the Hudson River. Since then, and in the seeker process where the city, uh, council was the lead agency, we, uh, narrowed down from 600 units. We cut off a third of the units, so that in the town now, we have 84 units, and, uh, in the city, we have, uh, 305 units. And, uh, there is, uh, mid-rise buildings in the city. There are a couple of, uh, townhouse-style buildings in the city, and then the line, uh, is the city, the city versus the town, uh, properties, and there are old townhouse, uh, buildings in the town portion. We, uh, presented this, uh, some time ago to, uh, the planning, uh, department, and, uh, we worked with them and, uh, with Mr. Weisman as, as well, took the input that we got from them, and we created this project, which essentially mirrors, uh, the components of the waterfront housing overlay district, which we are hopeful tonight that you will recommend to the town board to place, uh, that zoning district on, on our property. The, um, the, the portion in the town is strictly residential. However, the larger project will have a commercial component of, uh, 13,800 square feet, uh, which will be either retail or a restaurant, whatever, whatever the market will bear. It's, uh, the balance of the first building, which is on the main access, which is Duchess Avenue. Duchess Avenue, uh, is accessed by Water Street, and Water Street is accessed, uh, by Main Street, which is where the, uh, train station is, and the Hoffman Street Bridge. The access to the town portion will be within the, uh, complex itself over the main limp road that has been presented. There are, uh, there is amenities within Building A. Uh, I have, um, a description of the, of them, what's intended to be. As an example, we intend to have a clubroom and a theater, a billiard room, a fitness room. We also are going to have outside amenities. The outside amenities, by the way, all of those interior amenities, we intend to put on the first floor opposite the commercial space. The outside amenities will be primarily in this area, which is surrounded by the other two mid-rise buildings, and that would include, uh, a, a pool, a barbecue area, a seating area, or possibly, uh, an outdoor TV viewing area, and a pergola and other architectural detail. We also have a barbecue area right here. The primary, uh, open space would be the public park, and that would, uh, enter again through the main entrance, which is Duchess Avenue, at the bottom of Duchess Avenue, and there will be a walkway with landscaped areas, uh, through, uh, the city portion and into the town portion. We have, uh, design on the city side of a- We have designed on the city side of a playground, and the town side is open to your suggestions. We can put a playground in there initially, we considered it, and we certainly can put it in if it's your preference. We have, at the time, right now, the intent is to stabilize the shoreline with riprap and vegetation, and we have a plan that I can present with you, present tonight, that Andrew has with us. And other than that, it's whatever amenities the town prefers, whether it be playground, benches, whatever is your preference. It's a passive park, so there won't be much activity other than, you know, walking and things of that nature. We are very sensitive to the fact that our next-door neighbor to the north is the Hudson River Rowing Association, which is very concerned about any motorized use on the, in the water. They're concerned about any use on the water. So our direction is primarily to make this a walking, a pedestrian park. There is an additional emergency residential-only access that we are proposing on North Water Street. There's a very, this portion of Water Street is in fact the right-of-way into the Hudson River Rowing Association. It's owned by Vassar College, and we are in discussions right now. We need a small portion up by the entrance, and then there's a portion down here.
That's the plan that they've reviewed.
Oh, okay, all right. And then we're, and we're going to try to get that loop road, right now it doesn't show that, because this is a road without Vassar's approval. But we're working on that right now, and I think we're very close to, well, I hope we're very close to getting Vassar to sign off on it. And in which case, you would come in here, and then you would just enter the road, and you can enter right here. In addition, the main entrance comes in through here and loops around. You could also, there's a secondary entrance that is here, so that emergency vehicles or any vehicles can come in, enter, circle, and then leave. At the bottom here, we are proposing also a cul-de-sac. Again, it's not shown here, but that's because we are eliminating these parking spaces at the, at the request of the city and many of the interested parties that wanted to have more green and landscape rather than the parking. And we're going to provide parking along Duchess Avenue and throughout the complex to mitigate for that loss of parking.
Let me show them the difference.
Okay. Sure.
Hi, Andrew Featherston. It's about 8:30 tonight, Manhattan College is playing Louisville in about 45 minutes, and I would greatly appreciate an expeditious review to, with a positive outlook to the town board. Back to the project. This is the plan that we had submitted to your board, and we had had a number of meetings with the city since, since that had been submitted. And one of the change, some of the changes I'd like to make clear to the board, some of them Lou has, has been alluding to. The plan that you have in your possession is, shows an access off of North Water Street that would only access the upper story of a two-story garage. That garage is to be constructed behind Building D. North Water Street is elevated about 30 feet elevation. Our garage is going to be about 20, in the 20s. The lower floor will be in the teens, and then we're grading the site down. The site is a brownfield site, and there is an active reclamation of that site going on, capping of that site. While they're capping the site, they're also doing some geotechnical work, some dynamic compaction, making the soil suitable to take the loads of the buildings. So one of the changes that we did was, we took this whole roadway and we shifted it to the north. We do need easements from Vassar in order to provide an access down to grade. What we want to do is have this access so that it's not only for passenger cars going to the second story of a garage, we want it to also be an expeditious route for an emergency vehicle to get down to grade, have another way into the site. Our main entrance is Duchess Avenue. This is the cul-de-sac that Lou was speaking about. We added that because we took a lot of the parking out of the park. Again, we've had a lot of more discussions with the city than we have with your board. And one of their concerns was the amount of parking that was right up against our walkway, getting very close to the water. So we've eliminated the parking in the drive aisle, and rather, we've provided parking off of our main drag. So that allowed us to, taking a playground from about this location and shift it south, closer to the cul-de-sac, closer to where we're proposing a bus stop. The pavement on Duchess Avenue, we're proposing to restore Duchess Avenue completely and the utilities in Duchess Avenue. The city engineer has classified the, the water main in Duchess Avenue as vintage. So we are going to create a tap for the water right from the top, bring it right down, loop through our site, and then come back out through our driveway onto North Water Street and reconnect. So we'll have a number of connections for the water to serve the community. We're also very low. We're, we're down about in the teens above the water, so we don't believe that water supply or pressure will be an issue. North Hoffman Street Bridge, since we've been on this project, has been reconstructed. It was formerly about where my finger is, it's moved to the north, brand-new bridge. To sewer the project, because we're so low, the sewer treatment plant is up in this area, we're going to collect everything on the site via gravity, bring it to a pump station at this location, and force the sewage up and over the new Hoffman Street Bridge. We had a lot of conversation with the city when they were having the bridge rebuilt, and they've provided sleeves, and the, the bridge is ready to accommodate that sewer. The city's put in all new water mains in that section of North Water Street as well, which we're going to connect to. The other change, some other changes since, since we had submitted, we submitted to your board, or to the town almost seven weeks ago. So we've had a lot of changes, and that's why I'm trying to bring you up to speed on some of these. We had a gated, we have a gated community. We were gating up here and down here. On this plan, we're showing gates here and here as well. So the public access was really this area, so that we could get the public to the retail areas and to the park, and parking on Duchess, on-street parking as well as the off-street parking. What we've done is, we've removed the gates at Duchess Avenue at our upper entrance and also here. So now we have full public access for a vehicle around Building A. We can also turn around in a 80-foot cul-de-sac is the diameter for the city. I want to go back on Duchess Avenue, I kind of got off of that. Duchess Avenue, right now, the pavement is 40 feet wide. We, in trying to accommodate some on-street parking, also for the 1,400-foot of park that we have, but also for visitors that would be using the walkway. The elevator is going up, as you're all well aware, and we've had a number of conversations with the folks from the walkway, they're looking for more parking as well. So we're providing diagonal spaces on the south side and then parallel spaces on the north side of Duchess, to provide for what we're predicting the load would be for our walkway and also to help out with walkway on the Hudson.
Andrew's going to go to the park in a minute, but I just wanted to point out, this was, this is a brownfield that was approved for remediation by the Department of Environmental Correction.
Conservation.
Conservation. Yeah, okay. And we have been, you know, in compliance, we have onsite consultant, and we have, you know, proceeded, all of the materials that had to be exported have been exported off the site, which would include the demolition of the buildings, there were underground storage tanks, above-ground chemical tanks, there was the floors of the larger buildings, which were very distinctive, they were totally contaminated, because that's where the processing took place, which is copper, cap, chromium, and arsenic. So a lot of people that worked there ended up with yellow fingers, but that will be eliminated. And so that, the export has been completed, and we are now in the process of the cap. The cap includes from two to approximately five feet of fill above a demarcation layer, and the top, the top layer being either landscaping or the buildings themselves. And that is the, that was the plan that's been approved, and we're moving along in the process. We've imported substantial amount of clean fill already, but we're, there's still a substantial amount to go. We've tried to alleviate the road usage by barging in most of it to date, and we're still trying to work that out, getting the logistics of that down, so we have to, we have a minimum impact from the roads on, from trucks.
I wanted to give you some additional numbers. The total area of the site is about 14.3 acres. There's about nine acres in the town, I'm sorry, backwards. There's about nine acres in the city, about three acres in the town. The park in the town is about .82 acres, and the park in the city is about 1.63 acres. So total, the park is 2.45 acres. Talked about the access, we talked about the number of sites. Parking in the town, each of these units will have a garage, and will also be able to park a car out in front in the driveways. What we have is parking in the, in the front of the driveway, parking in the garage, and then a roadway out at the front of the building to kind of hide the garages. That was the, that was the reason for this plan. So the parking for the units in the town, there are 185 spaces for 87 units, or over two parking spaces per unit in the town. The other thing I wanted to speak about was Kidney Creek is a piped conveyance that currently goes through the site. Realizing that Dutton Lumber Company wants on the site, they fabricated a, an enclosure or a culvert for that creek. They made it out of railroad, they kept the natural earth bottom, made it out of railroad ties, and put a concrete slab on the top so they could drive their forklifts over it, so it could take the load. That is vintage also, and that needs to be replaced. We're proposing a piped conveyance through there, and we're working it out with your engineer and also with the city engineering office. That, that creek is right on the line presently. We're proposing to relocate it over onto the city property, Kidney Creek, and then fill in the former, the former conveyance. We are on the Hudson, we are in a, the entire site before filling is in the 100-year flood zone, the entire site. The elevation of the 100-year flood at this location is about elevation eight. The 500-year, and also the elevation of about the surge from Irene was the 500-year storm, and that was about elevation 9.7. The park is going to be elevated between two and eight feet above the grade that it is right now. So the park will be inundated in an extreme storm event. However, all of the units are proposed to be between two and three feet at minimum above the 100-year storm event. We're very sensitive to that.
Above the 100-year.
I could show you the park plan?
Now, do you have an elevation of the units that'll be in the town?
Yeah, sure.
We're running a little, you know.
I'm sorry, yeah, sure.
Yeah, your basketball game's about ready to start.
I went to Manhattan too, but I'm stuck here.
Yes, you are.
Let me have the board.
The, our architect is LMV, and they have, in concert with all of the interested and party, have created this plan. And this is a 12 and a 15-unit building, because it's, there are three units in each, in each unit, or in each building, there's, it's three units, and then it rises up. So the, on the back end is the garage with a small area of space, and then on the first floor is a flat, and then above that is adjoining townhouses. Everything is sprinkled and five, you know, has all the safety code features. And in, at the behest of the town's suggestions, that's all the kind of units that are going to locate it in the town. We have been very compliant with the waterfront housing overlay district, so, so having complied, we're hoping that you will allow the zoning to be placed on that so that we can proceed with your review as a site plan application. There is one final component. I briefly mentioned that it's here, and that's the park plan. We have a simple design, including, actually, some of you may have it in the smaller version, I passed that out. And again, the, on Duchess Avenue, we'll land in a cul-de-sac, which will allow for full turnarounds. There's also an additional turnaround for vehicles to go around Building A, which is fully open. Then the walkway will meander through the, on the riverfront, which is approximately 1,400 feet long, and on the city, on the city side, we'll have the playground and some plantings, and on the town side, we're going to have it landscaped with the 12-foot walkway. And there can be additional amenities like a bench and a park, playground, if the town still chooses.
Okay, thank you. Kurt?
This project is in the very early stages. The town board referred it over to the planning board for recommendation. The senior housing overlay district, for which the applicant has applied to the town board, specifies a 62-day time period for the planning board to make a recommendation back to the board.
Waterfront, waterfront housing overlay district?
Yes, is that what I said?
He said senior.
It was a senior moment, I apologize. So the, the code specifies a 62-day response period. We anticipate, there's a lot of issues with this coordination with the city, environmental, a long history-changing project. We've just learned about some additional changes tonight. So we're recommending that the planning board make a request back to the town board to extend the time for that response, because we anticipate the planning board is going to need additional information and back and forth with the applicant in order to understand the plan well enough to make a recommendation to the town board. So that's how, that's the first of our two recommendations, is to make a request for time 120 days forward from March 20th to August 8th. The second one is simply to have staff prepare comments for the next meeting, we're in the process of rounding up our consultants, and we'd like to put together those comments for the April 17th meeting of the planning board.
Got it. Thank you. So, so this is sort of a discussion, not a discussion, but I'll accept any comments from anybody, Don, Harold, anybody, you know, board members, Liz.
Yeah.
Comments, anybody have any comments?
No, you go ahead, Don.
I was just going to ask about, I've seen the phasing drawings, and I see that the town's piece is in phase six, and I was wondering, does that mean that the park is in phase six as well? And how would the treatment of the interface between the city and the town be during the time that there isn't anything in the town?
There was a.
There was a...
There's a phasing, oh sure, go ahead.
What's the number of units, 84?
Yeah.
There's a, there was a number of units, 84 is the key.
Eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven is the key number of units, so we were starting with Building A, getting in our utilities in phase two, and then in phase three, the park goes in. And that's, that's what we've shown on the plan, is phase three.
That's the city part.
No, that's the park, complete. We're not, we didn't break it up. We didn't break it up into the municipalities, we said one park. The park is in phase three.
The park.
In total.
Got it, okay.
Yep.
And what would the treatment, I'm not as concerned about the park, but what would the treatment be at the, at the city-town line during, before, until the town section got built?
The, the entire site prior to our filling operation was paved. Entire site was paved. So what we are doing is, we're filling the site for the environmental remediation. It'll then come up farther to bring it up above floodplain. The entire site is going to be a grassed field. That's what we're proposing. To grass that field, it's got to be stabilized. So we want to do that as soon as we get done with the capping, as soon as we get done with the filling, and then start in on phase one. So everything you're going to see is going to be grassed field.
So is the elevation going to be consistent from phase one through phase six prior to building?
I would...
All of it at 12 feet, or 12 to 16, or whatever?
It gradually slopes up from the, from the, everything is going to drain towards the river as it does today.
Don, I think the, we're not going to leave the site bare, and, you know, soil and dusty. With each phase that we build, we intend to build that phase, and that the, the other phases will either be built already, or they will be landscaped, they will be, they will have grass, so they will be stabilized.
You say as each phase is built, what I'm trying to figure out is, is the entire site being brought up to the pre, or to the level in which you're going to put the buildings? Or are we going to bring it up by phase one, and then we're going to bring up phase two?
No, we're going to, we're going to grade the whole site so that we can get our certificate of completion from DEC.
Andrew, maybe, Andrew, when, when you're doing the, the eleva, the topography for the site development, is the topography throughout the site going to be completed for the whole site at once? And if not, with it, and if not, if not, then how, how will you go about bringing up the grades on phases under construction relative, and what will happen to the elevation, the proposed, the elevations of the phases not yet to be developed? I think that's what Don is trying to get.
I, I see where, I see what Don is asking. We have one elevation for the capping, which is about a two-foot cap, and then we have earth above that. We really haven't completely added that on. What we were going to do was stabilize the site for where it is.
So let me, let me play devil's advocate here. You're stabilizing the site, you're getting your grade, we start with a clean palette, the entire site is going to be grass.
That's right.
Okay? As you begin to build?
Right.
You're going to be working from south to north?
That's about what it is, yes, yes.
So in the event, devil's advocate, you don't build anything, or it doesn't get approved, we're all going to be left with a grassy...
You're going to be left with a grass field, yeah.
Okay. Now, why are you, and, once you get the infrastructure in, isn't it, I would like to see part of the town be built simultaneously with some of the parts in the city. I mean, I don't want to wait while this is just me talking.
Right.
You know, as you move to the, to the north. I mean, it seems to me we ought to be able to phase some of it simultaneously.
John, that is, yes, we, I think that we had to break it up somehow, so we chose a south-to-north phasing plan. It's a very, you know, it's a very strong possibility that we will not, you know, just because it's called phase six, typically you don't, you know, doesn't mean that you have to build the other five phases.
Well, we're going to, we're going to be looking for a phasing plan and dates and things, so I think we need to discuss more how, how you might go about doing that.
Well, we have, we have the phases proposed, we have not had the luxury of being before your board to discuss it really.
I understand, no, it was our first meeting, so that's, that's fine.
Right.
These are going to be comments that are coming back to you, that's all.
One of the issues, one of the issues that we have is that you don't want to have a resident drive-through construction site. So one of the reasons that, and being that the main entrance is on Duchess Avenue at the current time, although we're going to create infrastructure and railways, we think that at this point it's prudent to, you know, build from south to north. But we, that, expect that that could evolve.
Okay, that's fine, I just wanted to throw that out there.
The other part of my question was how, how was this thing going to be left when you hit the city line? So I think you've answered that, it's right now, it's going to be, as you're, you're going to cap it, and then as you're proceeding, from whichever direction you're proceeding, you're going to end up filling, and we'll be looking, if you were in the town side, you'd be looking at some sort of a fill section. But it also looks like you're using all the available property in the town on your site, which leaves you basically with a retaining wall face, if I understand that correctly, from the boathouse?
There's a small wall on the boathouse side. There's two chain-link fences that separate us right now. We're proposing to put a retaining wall here, yes, because that is to bring it up to grade. That is to get that separation between the floodplain.
Okay, so you'd be, if we was, if I was down at the boathouse, I'd be looking, you said small retaining wall, I'm envisioning nine, 10, 12 feet high.
Oh no, nothing, no, nothing like that.
How do you get to elevation 16 or 18, or whatever you have on the back of the site?
Right.
And the other site is down quite a ways, and only get a small retaining wall?
It is, it is down quite a ways as you get towards the river, but it rises in the back. We can give you more elevations whenever more information.
We will want to see that, yeah.
Yeah, there's no 10, 12-foot walls on that side.
Okay.
Absolutely not.
That's good.
So how does that, the pathway meet up there then with the boathouse property?
What?
If you're raising up, raising that up?
The park side, you mean?
The, the walkway.
The park.
Yeah, the park walkway.
Right now, the, right now, the walkway is going to terminate with a couple of bollards, a couple of pipe bollards, preventing vehicles from going through. The applicant has had a lot of conversation with H R R A, the Rowing Association.
Yeah, I understand, I understand that, but how, that's going to be, you're putting the fill there.
It's not, the rise at the, at the river, the rise is not significant at all.
Okay.
And, yeah, you know, at the, we have to cap it because of the brownfield, but that's a two-foot, and then we can feather it into the walkway that exists right now.
Yeah, making sure it's still ADA grade and stuff.
Right, right, right. No, at the river and at the walkway area, it will be a minimal raise.
We're proposing a, a couple of things there. Number one, there's a minor grade increase here. The elevation at the, at the boathouse, at the, right at the walkway is about elevation four, we're at elevation five at our, at our walkway. The other thing that we're proposing is, there's one way into the boathouse for a vehicle, and that's through North Water Street, a large vehicle. We're proposing also an emergency access, which is probably going to be grasscrete, something that would sustain a large vehicle, but would also provide access. Again, the access, the fence, it's beneficial to both properties. We could, access could be gained to H R R A, or access could be gained to our site. It's a two-way street, we think it's beneficial to both. So we're trying to, it's another thing we're trying to work out with our neighbor.
Yep.
Yeah, phase work, they seem, they seem concerned about some of the issues, but...
Sure.
You know, you're not proposing a marina or anything, so I think that works well with their, their rowing concerns.
Yeah, it's not a competing interest, yeah.
So there's a...
Just Duchess Avenue, you going to maintain the road, or is the city maintain?
It's going to maintain, it's going to be maintained as a city road. We're going to put a new water main down it. We're going to widen up the curbs, is what is on our latest plan. We're going to provide parking, it's all going to be repaved. It really has to be, it's in awful shape right now.
Sidewalk as well, but it will remain a city street.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, I mean, the building looks like that, you're going to build a building, then you're going to block the view from another building. My opinion, probably would scatter the buildings so everybody's got the view of the river, you know, it's like, like this. Whereas because right now, the last four buildings, like, right, you blocking the view from the first building.
Yes.
Because it's, it's a townhouse, so, I mean, if I'm living in that building, first building, I'm not going to be able to see the river.
Yeah, the views are, the views are going to be between the buildings.
That's my next question.
We were trying to have that center vehicular courtyard to hide all the garage doors from the main road that was going around. That was, that was the idea, but...
I mean, in the town section, there's no, you know, big green space, like there's the pool area and that other area, but there's...
Well, you're right, you're absolutely right, the green space is the 1,400-foot park.
But the green space is the park for that.
Yeah.
So I certainly see the benefit of benches all the way along the park.
Absolutely, right.
Whether or not a play structure is required, I don't know.
Just a question that I have, since the city is the lead agency, what part do we play?
Primarily, it's, it's really about site plan review.
Okay.
And, and that's the technical comments that we'll pull together, we'll get to the applicants for the, for the next meeting. The, the environmental review has been largely completed, and I say it that way because both the planning board and the town board as involved agencies also have to issue their own secret findings. You know, there may be some, some parts of the mitigation that the lead at the city council as lead agency identified in their finding statements from two years ago, that the town board or the planning board may either agree or disagree, or may want to see modified as it relates to the town portion of the plan. I wouldn't expect either, either the town board or the planning board findings to be as extensive as lead agencies, simply because we've got just basically one-third of the project, and realistically, what we're looking at here are, again, sort of site plan issues. I think a lot of the questions of traffic, some of the off-site impacts have all been addressed through that secret process. So we're really focusing on the onsite stuff, and, and what we'd like to see through the, through the design of, of the internal roads and the location of the buildings, and, and this, you know, the, the proposed waterfront access as well.
The other question I have is, and may I be, is the city and the town building code are the same? I know it's a state.
It's the state building code, yeah.
Code, okay.
Right, right, I mean, their zoning code is different than ours.
Okay, that's right.
Certain imperatives that, that may not be reflective of things that we were interested in seeing. In fact, they actually dropped, was it an overlay zone? I know they changed the zone, they could just change the zone, or they modified the...
They did just change, they had an existing zone that they just changed.
Yeah, they modified the waterfront zone for this project.
Right, that's right, that's right.
You know, we're doing slightly different, we're actually, has to drop an overlay zone that we had created onto this, this project.
Okay.
Which has its own area model and other requirements. So it's a slightly different process for us, but at heart, it's a zoning amendment. But the, the city is also working its way through, as we are, the site plan review, which is sort of the, the nuts and bolts of what this thing ultimately is going to look like. We've been in contact with the, the city's consulting planner slash engineer, you know, trying to coordinate what, what it is they're doing here. The city is, I think you adjourned the public hearing at this point?
No, we were scheduled for a new one. I mean, we, they continue it.
Yeah, they adjourned, yeah, they have an ongoing public hearing, and we're, we're talking with them, trying to figure out how our, our efforts may dovetail with theirs.
Well, one of the things that is a very important part is, neither the town or the city is doing this in a vacuum, that we, one of the important steps that's going to be made, and I, and I believe it's been scheduled, but if it's not, it should, it'll be momentarily, is to meet with Mr. Wilson and, and his crew, and Mr. Holman, and, and Mr. Beer, and the city, as well as our members now, and try to mesh it all together. But the first thing we have to do is to make sure that, that, that your recommendation, and then the town board says, yeah, we're, we're going to do it this way, and then we can do that. I mean, we're not holding back, we're going to do it anyway, but...
What is your, these are going to be mostly sales, or mostly rentals, or a mix?
We, we've designed it as a for-sale product, but it's, we didn't, we, we want to make sure that it's an occupied project under any circumstance. We also need financing, and right now, there's no financing for condominium or for-sale products per se, and of this level. So, but we're, you know, our initial thrust is toward for-sale. If it is a rental, then we can, you know, either way, we have a, you know, we have an idea of what we can get for them now. We have done our market studies and things like that. They're a little older now, but, you know, we're, we're comfortable with the pro formas.
Are the townhouse layouts like similar to the, the ones that are what, just south of the grand view, and, I mean, are they multi, I mean, how many stories of the townhouse?
The, there's a garage on the, on the, on the surface level, and then above that is a unit, and then above that one unit is actually a doubled, an attached townhouse. So that's how you get your three units. So I, I don't, I'm not that familiar with the architectural layout of Hudson Point, but I don't, I don't, actually, I don't know, I really don't know.
I mean, some of those are really strange. I mean, some of them are these one-room on each floor.
Right.
You know, and, which are, which are great for, you know, college kids and...
Right.
And young singles, but for older people, they're like, you know, unless you've got a vest.
Our target market is going to be young professionals and, you know, empty nesters. And we think that there's more than enough demand in the neighborhood for that. People that are done raising their kids and want to get rid of their house, but want to live on the Hudson. Young professionals that want to live within a quarter mile of the railroad track, of the railroad station. So we're, we're confident this will be a very, a strong development.
Yeah, one of my questions was, is there first-floor master bedrooms in some of the units?
Yes.
For those empty nesters?
Yes.
Sounds like, sounds like there is.
The answer is, but the answer is that the way the economy's looking right now, you're, it's leaning toward rentals, is what you're really saying.
I know what he said was, it's leaning toward whatever they sell.
Yeah.
But, but he also... Okay, fine. Any other questions? Carol?
Just a couple of questions. Are they still doing any monitoring there at all, or has that been signed off completely?
What, well, well, monitoring?
Groundwater monitoring. Is there anything going on there? Is there any...
No, but we do testing, you know, no, then there's no periodic, permanent groundwater at this point. I think at the end there is. I don't know off the top of my head, but not right now, no.
Do you know?
We've removed the contaminants, we're not putting them in.
Do they have to have monitoring?
Right, but there, I mean, there were monitoring wells on the site.
I believe there were.
There were, I'm familiar, I used to do monitoring on the site, so...
Oh, okay, yeah, I, I think, yes.
Are there, you know, do they remain, are they, or are they properly capped? Because that's a, you know, an introduction to more contaminants. I don't know if they're still there or not. It's kind of, and, you know, the stream monitoring, is there, is there anything still ongoing on that site?
All right, we're going to need to get that information.
The other question, I'm, I'm sure you've dealt with the coastal zone management, the local waterfront, okay, all that's been straightened out, the, Department of State is all happy with the project?
Yes.
Okay.
As a matter of fact, the Department of State has authorized a grant, if we wanted, for the design of the park.
Okay, and with regard...
And it's under the auspices of Bonnie Devine, who was pretty much the coastal zone management person.
Right. And just, was there any consideration of that road, the waterfront road, being internal as opposed to just, you know, separating? The road is the most adjacent thing to the waterfront, is that, was that ever part of the design option?
The park is.
Right, we have the park, and I haven't, I haven't seen this planned before, which have the park, which may be like, you know, a couple of feet wide.
Oh, it's, it's...
I don't know what the scale is, but then you have the road.
Yeah, it's, it's as much as 100 feet wide in some spots, yeah, it's, it's quite.
One of the comments was that they didn't want a, a building that close to the park, so the, the road acts as somewhat of a buffer, so that the first building from the river is more than 100 feet away. So that was actually a cure to some of the comments.
Very good, okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to try and move along here.
Okay.
Can I just ask one question?
Yes.
I just want to be clear, Carol asked a question regarding any ongoing onsite monitoring?
Monitoring wells?
I wasn't sure what your answer was.
Whatever is provided for in the remedial design work plan, and I, off the top of my head, I can't, I, I don't recall if it is. I know that there, I don't believe there's any monitoring wells right now. I believe that they, they existed, they've been capped, because we are watched by many layers of eyes, including the ones on the walkway.
Part of, part of the comments that's going to come out is, we're going to ask for that information.
Right.
Will you, will you provide us a copy? I'm not sure that we have a copy of the remed, of the DEC-approved remediation plan.
No problem.
Can you provide that?
I can provide you a full copy.
Yeah, there would be a closure, you know, a sign-off on that site.
We're going to need to see all those, all that documentation.
It's not closed yet.
Because I'm sure the city would also.
Yes.
I would assume, but I don't know.
Okay. So... Okay, I move that the town, that the planning board requests the town board to extend the 62-day time period for the planning board to make a recommendation to the town board on the proposed... on the proposed waterfront overlay designation to a time period of 120 days forward from March 20, 2014. That is till August 8, 2014.
Do I have a second? No second?
Hello?
Are we going to second it?
I'll second.
Second. I'll second.
Well, that's interesting.
It's been seconded a long time. Lost. Okay.
You don't want to second any more calls?
We got a second. All right, so. We moved the second, the town board, recommendations to the town board regarding a, what am I doing here? The planning board requests the town board to extend the 62-day time period for the planning board to make a recommendation to the town board on the proposed waterfront housing overlay district designation to a time period 120 days forward from March 20, 2014 to August 8, 2014. Call the question, those in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries five to zero.
I move that the planning board direct the staff to prepare the comments from today's meeting and staff comments for the.
April 17.
Comments for the April 17, 2014 planning board meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. It's moved in second, the planning board, direct staff to prepare comments for the April 17, April 17, 2014 planning board meeting to include all comments and concerns that were tonight, plus the staff review. Call the question, those in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries five to zero. Yep, that's all we got to do at this point. And it's going to be back in the. That's it. At some point, we'll make a recommend, or not make a recommendation to the town board, and then it's up to them if they want to, to.
Well, we're, the mission next is to do a full, a full workup of the site plan and engineering issues, and it's available to the board and the applicant.
Right. Okay, so maybe we'll move something along here. It's been a long project.
Thank you.
You guys have been sticking with it. Thank you.
I'd like to see something happen.
Oh, I agree. Something's got to happen, but. Okay, next, we have.
Juliet.
Juliet Bookstore renovations. And I'm going to propose we take a six-minute break.
Six?
Five.
All right, five. It'll turn into six or seven, trust me.
Second. We get overtime?
We'll let them sit. We'll give you five minutes to set it.
Yeah, yeah.
Buildings.
(inaudible).
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 (inaudible).